Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order if we can. And we're gonna begin with an invocation followed by the pledge allegiance and Captain Webb, with our fire department, has agreed to give that invocation, so please stand with me.
Let us pray. Hail Father, we come thanking you for this day. Father, we thank you. Things are well with us as they are. We thank you for the hearts and minds that gather here this evening. And Father, we ask you to reset our hearts, our minds. We celebrate our faults, Father, because everything transcends, that's not beyond your understanding. Father, as we go about this evening, we ask prayers for the mayor and the council and decisions that they have to make. And Father, we ask for a special blessing for our law enforcement officers and our firefighters, that you protect them and keep us safe. These blessings we ask in the Son Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain, thank you so much, sir. We appreciate you. Row call, Ms. Salter?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCleskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andres?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And President Limbaugh?
Here.
You have a quorum?
So we do have a quorum. And the next item is the reading of the minutes from January 28th, and we are gonna carry that over. So the next item after that is the vacancies and appointments. And in our transition period here, we are, we may have an issue or two here that we've gotta clean up a little bit, so bear with me. We're gonna go through these one at a time. Mr. Higginbotham on the environmental commission at large opening, do you know where we are on that?
We're at me opening it tonight, right now.
Okay.
I will like to open it until, let's say, March 11th, which would be a month.
Okay.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure, please.
Who's at-large position is this?
This is Jonathan Hunt's position.
Okay.
He moved to Trustville. In fact, I, well, Melanie wasn't even here. I was pointing to Melanie like she was here. She wasn't here. I knew that he was moving to Trustville, and it took him forever to get us his resignation letter, though I tried to open it about a month and a half ago, and I couldn't until we got the, anyway. So, March 4th unless there's objections to that.
So you wanna close it at 4:30 on 3/11?
Yes, please. March 11th, that's right.
That'll be fine. No problem. All right. We need to reopen BZA for Ward 2. I know we thought we had done that, Mr. Wolverton and Mr. Higginbotham, but there seems to be some, yeah, I don't think we did. And I would say to you, if the current member wants to apply for another term, she contacted me, but she didn't contact the city clerk.
Okay. I can, Mr. Chairman, I can look back at my emails, but I'm reasonably sure she sent an email that said I want to be reappointed.
She sent an email to me as well, but she didn't send an email to the city clerk's office. Go ahead.
We were unable to find it today, so...
Okay. So we just need to tell her that she needs to send another email saying that she's interested in the position.
But we need to reopen it as well.
We need to reopen.
Sure, no, I understand. I'm just...
If she could send it to my attention, that'd be great. We could time it, say, when we look.
Right, as I said. Okay, that's fine with me. We, can we reopen it until our next meeting, which will actually be, I wonder, our next council meeting will be two weeks?
Two weeks, yes.
Committee meetings will just be extended. Yeah, that's, you okay with that?
Sure.
That's what we do.
We're not leaving you out.
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to look back. I thought she called.
No, I got her email myself, but I, again, procedurally, I'm not sure we've handled this.
You're gonna open that to March 11th also, again?
No, no.
Let's just, let's just open that until, yeah, 'cause it's been open already, and we only got one person who expressed interest.
I've got a date in December 19th. It was September...
No.
Mine, myself, Bruce, and Robert. But that was, I'm sorry.
That was actually before we opened it, because she knew it was coming to an end. So, 'cause we didn't open it until January, 'cause it wasn't open until January.
So you wanna open until 2:25 at 4:30?
Without objection, yes.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, next, we've still got the, where did we leave the three Hydra IDB?
They were extended through today, but we didn't, as far as I'm concerned...
We still have no applicants.
I got no applications for the three Hydra at-large or the Ward 2 Hydra IDB.
I do have one person that's inquired, and I have connected her with Katie Lincoln to give her some more information on what she can expect to serve. It's Betsy McGuire, and Katie has not gotten back to her yet, so I can reach back out to Betsy.
Would you please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't we extend that for another 30 days and see, because it's three applicants, and we'll do that and make that happen, okay? All right, anything else? Any council members? Sorry, I've got some glasses issues, glasses issues here. Okay? Good. Thank you. All right, we've got two additions to the agenda. Let me share those if I can. One is committee referral to finance. It's 11-09-19, which is a request for consideration of declaring the following vehicle surplus, 2006 Ford 500, the VIN ends in 187-712. And just for y'all's information, the one that we did was 187-721. So this is a different vehicle than the one we've done before. It's, this is the one that's assigned to the IT department, requested by Gordon James, and again, assigned to finance. We also have one new business item. It's 10-02-19, which is a request for consideration of adoption of resolution placing a lien on the property located at 28 Edge Hill Road, Homewood, for the cost of abatement in the amount of $16,500, because this property was declared a public nuisance on July the 9th, 2018, Resolution 1891, requested by Wyatt Pugh, with our BEZ department and Ms. Salter with our city clerk. Those are the only two items. Chair would welcome a motion and second for approval of the amended agenda. Motion from Mr. McCleskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Andres. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. Okay. We'll move into old business agenda, 2010-18, consideration to condemn the house at 1627 Salter Road, requested by Wyatt Pugh. We have said we're gonna carry this over until the second meeting in February, and so we'll continue to carry that over. Any questions on that? Good. All right. Public hearing, 08-01-19, which is a public hearing, continued from January 28th, 2019, for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 210 Raymond Drive, requested by Ben Green, Mr. Cobb, and as I said, this is continuing. Mr. Cobb, what else do you have to share with us?
I've got some photos of what started here. Is a fence that the neighbor that lives on Salter Road actually started, and I had this discussion last week, that is the backyard to the house on Salter Road.
Yes.
So I've not spoken to Mr. Green, but this looks like what he was requesting. And, yeah. Okay. So, it looks like the homeowner on Salter Road has got the situation cured.
And she's here.
She's here.
Yeah. We wanna hear from her if she wants to speak. But continue on.
Okay. All right. We had the discussion that in, on a corner lot, it says that the fence needs to be 15 feet inside the property line. And this case, the property line is nine and a half feet behind the curb. This is another four foot 10 behind the curb, so that fence now is about 14 and a half feet back of the, from the back of the road. Okay? That's where it's sitting. If you, in my photograph, I don't guess I showed the road, but I can't even see her property pin. It's there. But I went out and measured all that stuff today, so from the road to that fence is 14 and a half feet.
It's supposed to be 14 feet.
Yes, sir.
So she's gonna need to get a variance?
No, that's up to you.
Okay.
And I was gonna say that the way that, the way the road falls off right there anyway, I don't see it as a sight distance problem. I was just gonna ask the council if you would entertain just letting it go straight on down there like it is. That next post to the right you see is where it's gonna go across, there's a post that you, right there in front of, right there, where he's got his, where he's got his little marker. That post right there, it would just run parallel to the road. The road moves over a little bit into that hillside, so it'll probably get a little further away from the road as it moves. It's gonna end up 14 and a half to 15 feet behind the street anyway.
I see. Any other questions for Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Cobb, when that fence turns, headed back towards Salter, wouldn't that be a front yard fence for a double-sided lot?
No, sir.
It won't be?
No, sir.
Don't double lots have two front yards?
You mean corner lots?
Double lots, I'm sorry. Corner lots.
They do, but we handle that in defense ordinance by that 15-foot offset.
Okay, so it can run that side?
Yes, sir.
Good to know. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Cobb?
So your recommendation would be just to...
Let her finish the fence. And we've got it, we got the compost, all that'll be out of sight, behind the six-foot privacy fence, and it's not gonna be a traffic hazard, so I haven't spoken with her enough since she sat down over here, but I imagine it's gonna stop at the driveway. It won't go beyond the front of the house.
All right, and just to be clear, so let her finish the fence and with the needed variance to do that.
No, there is no variance.
The council would have to grant a variance that is...
You just have to basically say it's okay for her to do it without getting that pass of hood.
Sir?
Oh, I got you. Okay.
She doesn't need a residence if we say that, I mean, there's a variance.
We just discovered this stuff on Friday.
All right, I'm sorry. Mr. Kendrick, what did you say?
It sounded like there was something that was...
But I think, did you rectify that with the permit, Marcy? Yes.
We're gonna drag you up here whether you want to.
You're coming.
Well, I will, and I will, my name is Marcy Miller. I live at 1090 Salter, and...
Would you put her down, please? Okay.
I am very, I will apologize. I had no idea that I had to get a permit to build my fence, but I'm actually doing it myself, so I will go get a permit. I called the office today, the zoning office, and they said, yes, you just need a permit. And I said, okay, I'll come get it. I'm sorry, I didn't, I had no idea that I needed. I was like, I'm building it myself, so, but I do apologize for that oversight on my part.
Okay. Any questions for her?
Does anybody have any questions about compost bins? I hear it was a hot topic.
I think, Mr. Thames has a question.
I was gonna ask Mr. Cobb, so what exactly, Mr. Cobb, what type of variances are you gonna need? It needs to be 15 feet off the road. It's gonna come how close to the road?
It's gonna 14 and a half feet right now, best I can measure.
So she needs a six-inch variance.
Well, does she need, Mr. Kendrick, she need to formally request that from the council?
Yes. We have to have a variance request in a public hearing.
Okay. We'll have to do this again.
Okay. No worries.
Unless you just, we'll build it based on your permit and being compliant, whatever that is.
Well, it would back it up all the way into the compost pen if you did that, because her property line's nine and a half feet off the road.
If it, if it doesn't comply with the fence ordinance.
Okay. All right, so we'll put this back on the agenda for a public hearing for her fence request to stay where it is, and we'll come back with that.
All right.
For your variance, more than half foot. Set back.
Not tonight, though.
More than that, okay. Whatever it is.
Not tonight.
Drop what's on here tonight?
Yeah, drop this issue.
Is that what you're saying?
Raymond has no longer needed it.
So this would be a different item?
Mr. Green, are you okay with dropping this if she continues with the fence?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. Is there, yes, please, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, do we, do we need to amend the referral agenda and go ahead and put this on now so that we can deal with it following Monday? I mean, our next Monday?
We can, but don't let me forget that until later, okay? Make yourself a little note here, because we're in the middle of a public hearing.
No, I know we can't do it in the public hearing.
We got it, one thing at a time.
I'm just trying to make sure we're gonna not forget to do that.
No, I agree. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this item? All right, so we're gonna close the public hearing, and...
Don't go away yet.
Chair would welcome a motion.
I would need to drop that later.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. We have a second from Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Now, let's circle back and add this back to committee referral for, I assume, special issues?
Yes, special issues.
Okay. And that, what would be the next number, Ms. Salter?
It will be 12-02-19.
Okay, so 12-02-19. Mr. Limbaugh, you don't have a public hearing, you need to authorize it. Right, I understand. You're gonna have it on the 28th if you need to do it tonight.
Notice it now?
Next month.
Can we notice it tonight? Sure.
We'll see what they say.
We're good. Okay. So I'm trying to think how to word this. Okay, a public hearing scheduled? 12-02-19 is the addition, having noticed a public hearing for February 22nd. Right.
It's sent, referred to committee for discussion, and then for a public hearing set on 2/25.
Right. All right, so chair would welcome a motion for an additional amendment to the...
Okay, yes. Yes, so we will, 12-02, refer to finance, I mean, refer to special issues for offense variance and for a set of public hearing on 2/25.
Great. So we have a motion for Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Woo, second from Mr. White, since I haven't heard from him. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. That's handled. Thank y'all very much. We appreciate it. Okay. Now... What is the address? Mr. Cobb, are you in on the next one?
Well, that's what she said. I meant to write that down.
Is that right, Greg? 1090 Salter Road?
I think so.
Have a seat, Mr. Cobb.
Was that 1090 Salter Road? Is that what she said?
Marcy?
1090 Salter Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. That's one.
Forgive us, this is a bit unusual, so.
It's been entertaining.
Are we straight on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm ready for the next one.
No problem. Well, is the next one you or Mr. Pugh?
It's gonna be me.
Okay, well, hold on then. All right, 10-01-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone property at 510 Tamworth Lane from an NPD, which is Neighborhood Preservation District, to a C4B, which is a high-rise office/commercial district. The applicant and owner is AUM Homewood LLC for the purpose to incorporate a small portion of property into an adjacent larger parcel under the same ownership for the use in conjunction with the planned development of a new hotel. Planning Commission has already had a unanimous vote, 7-0, for a favorable recommendation of the rezone requested by Wyatt Pugh, our PND committee, and this is carried over from 128. Did we get a report from PND already, Mr. Thames?
I don't think we did.
I'll turn that over to you.
Okay. The Planning Commission heard this, and as he says, the gentleman owns both parcels. He's wanting to subdivide into a single parcel, which would need common zoning. I'm hoping Mr. Cobb will have maybe our packet, there it is, from Planning Commission available for us to review tonight, but he is here for the rezone, the subdivision is contingent upon rezoning being approved.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Let me now open the public hearing, and we'll start with you, Mr. Cobb. Anyone who wants to speak to this matter, we very much want to hear from you. If you will, sign in with Ms. Salter over here with your name and address, so that we'll have a record of that. Also, I would ask you, if you can, limit it to about three minutes. We're not gonna cut the stopwatch on, but we want everyone to have a chance to talk. Mr. Cobb, go. Is it legal?
Yes, sir. Call my check, why not? Why not?
Okay, the little triangle in red is the parcel in question that wants to move into the parcel to the north. I figured this out, that, well, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure what happened. You can vaguely see two lines running at an angle across there. The yellow lines are very faint, and you see the right-of-way for Dover Road, which doesn't exist, and most likely never will. Those two parallel lines are the mains, water mains, that come from the treatment plant down on 280. They were put in in the 1890s. I don't even wanna walk across them, to tell you the truth, but, 'cause they're very fragile. We had some breaks on it before, back about 10 years ago. But what it looks like to me is that that little red triangle and all the property to the left was all one piece at one time, and it was bisected by the water lines in the 1890s, and that just left that little triangle by itself. The orange line that runs across the page is actually a section quarter, not a section quarter, but a section line between the southwest of Section 8 and the northwest of Section 17 below it. So, the property owner to the north just wants to combine that in, build a retaining wall there, and just make his parking lot a little bit larger. A question came up in the Planning Commission of was there ever gonna be a road built there in the Dover Road right-of-way, which could never happen without permission of the council, and I don't really think that you wanna build a road across those water lines that have been there for over 100 years. I mean, I wouldn't, but it would take action of the council for that to ever happen, so the applicant, just because he's there, has no rights to get in that right-of-way without permission of the council. So that was one of the biggest questions that we noticed at the Planning Commission. But all it is, that little bitty piece attaching to the piece to the north, is whoever owned it originally before the waterworks bisected it evidently just has no use for it, 'cause you can't get to it. Well, you could walk to it, but you could never get a road in there, or I'd say it'd be very, very difficult to ever put a road across those water lines.
Mr. Cobb, do you know the size of that triangle?
I had it on a tax map, but it's so small, I couldn't read it. It's not very big, but I know that, you know, it's a very, very tiny piece. I don't, I can't tell you exactly. There's another map. If we pull that up, we'll see what scale that map is. You can see in relation to that parking lot there, it's a very small piece of property.
All right. I'm just asking a question. If we, if the council elects to not approve this, can they still build the high-rise without that triangle?
Yes, sir. Can you still build it?
Interesting.
And we looked into, I mean, that piece of property where the hotel is only like two and a half acres, so you can imagine what that little tiny piece down there is.
So this is, well, let me hear what others have to say.
Sure.
We may, we may ask you other questions. Any other questions for Mr. Cobb?
I do have a quick question about the buffer. I'm just looking along, I mean, are we able to maintain a buffer over to the left here?
It's behind the, go back to the first.
Yeah, go back to the first, go to Brian.
Brian?
Back one, please.
No, Brian, the other one. No problem.
See, it's all, the whole thing is all wooded, so that little triangle could be, would become part of the buffer. You'd have a 10-foot buffer there.
Are you safe? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead. Well, I thought he was gonna build a retaining wall onto that triangle, and therefore he would be cutting into some of that buffer.
He can't cross that line, but he still, he still have room for his buffer.
Well, it actually looks like it's behind the principal buffer, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, there's a whole line of trees right there. I mean...
There is and there isn't. A lot of what you're seeing is shadow. If you look up there, see how, how that's black looking? That's really shadow from the, there's some trees right up against it, but what's further into the lot is actually shadow from the photo. 'Cause I walked right to it when I posted it.
Do we know what the property's gonna be used for?
It's a hotel.
No, I know that.
No, that section, the retaining wall.
At the Planning Commission, they said they didn't know what they were gonna use it for.
He said he's gonna make it be part of, put a buffer there, the buffer and the wall and part of his parking lot. Just gives him a little more room in the corner.
Hmm.
That's the best I understood. Is that what you understood, Mr. Thames?
Yeah, he said he was thinking about possibly using a portion of it for the corner of the retaining wall. At the Planning Commission level, I don't think he was certain one way or the other.
It gives him a little bit turning, better turning radius coming around that end of that parking lot.
Mr. Thames, is, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It is a hill. It falls off from that, it falls down. You can see that's part of the contour lines on there, but it's falling. That's, from there down to the property below is all falling.
I guess, Mr. Cobb, it's tough to know, not knowing the dimensions of the little piece there, but would that remain all buffer, or would that retaining wall encroach? I know he has to have a 10-foot buffer, right?
Right.
So, essentially, he's just, this would allow him to creep that retaining wall a little bit closer while maintaining the buffer, right? Do you think any of that retaining wall would land on this piece, or would it all?
I think the retaining wall would follow the property lines, those bottom two property lines, because it is, the property is falling away from the parking lot. Because it is, the property is falling away from the parking lot.
Mr. Thames is the developer here? Okay, good. Okay, well, good.
There you are.
You could, we'll, we'll let you, we'll ask you these questions later. Mr. Higginbotham, any?
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I was going to ask. I said, I was going to ask if the applicant or a representative was here because we kept saying, well, we think he's going to do this, and we think he's going to...
No, I understand. We'd like to get past that, so that's good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir.
We may get you back up here. Even though you've signed in, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Brock Tompkins. I live at 702 Belmont Road. I was at the original zoning hearing when Mr. Patel indicated that this parcel in question was, in fact, part of the Mountain Brook Inn. Full disclosure, I own a title company here in Homewood called Members Title. I did a little legwork. The parcel in question was actually required after Mr. Patel bought the Mountain Brook Inn property. So, his intent to build the hotel can't be in question. So, what he's, what he's trying to do is use the little sliver of land to get him more parking, if he can get it rezoned into a commercial coming from Neighborhood Preservation District. I think it's a slippery slope. There's a lot of property in question behind there. Whether it's usable or not is not my, not my call. But I do live on Belmont Road, which is very close to this property. And it's, it's a slippery slope to go in and add parking. Again, he did purchase the property, public record, after he did buy the Mountain Brook Inn, and it was, in fact, never part of the Mountain Brook Inn. I think it's very important for the council to know that. So, this is after the fact, trying to get a couple of extra parking spaces in this hotel.
So, Mr. Tompkins, are you for or against this?
I am against it.
Okay. Well, you indicated it, but you didn't say it, so...
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Any questions for him? Thank you. Next?
Good evening. I'm Pamela Moore. I live at 710 Belmont Road, back up to this property. Very much opposed to the, any commercial property encroaching into the residential area. We're so close to the commercial property as it is, and that's fine. We all understand that. But as it eases into the residential area, it's really unnecessary. And I know with those overheads that we saw, there was a lot of trees and shrubbery that appeared in those aerials that's not there anymore. And that is a really good buffer for the residential area. Tamworth certainly faces that. We have a lot of concerns about if that becomes zoned commercial, the other parcels that are adjacent to that. And we have a lot of concerns about Dover Road in future being opened again. And I know there's been a lot of conversation about it crossing the waterworks, but the potential is still there. There's a way around, I believe, over, without going over the waterworks. And that would open up traffic from that commercial area and 280 into, right onto Tamworth and into our neighborhood. So, there's a lot of concerns just going forward, even though it's a small parcel. There is a lot of other parcels adjacent to that that can be opened up later if this becomes commercial. So, we'd really like, the neighborhood would really like to see this remain residential and a good buffer to, you know, what is good commercial areas. So, that's a strong feeling from both Tamworth, Windsor, Belmont, any of the streets that are adjacent to this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We appreciate it. Next?
Mr. Lemah, could I ask a quick question, Mr. Cobb? Greg, remind me...
Mr. Cobb, come back.
As I recall, there were no parking variances needed for him to build his hotel. He hasn't had enough parking on his site plan originally, correct?
I think he did get a variance off the parking.
He did?
Did.
Sorry, Ms. Metters.
So, he went to the BCA, you think, and got a variance on the parking?
Didn't it come from, well, if it went to the BCA or to, didn't go through the planning commission? And the, we did the...
He's saying...
Okay. And it would, it would have been through the BCA. We can ask the owner if he... That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay. The reason I ask is, is I don't understand if he's, he's already been approved with the original amount of parking why Moore is needed. It's not preventing him from pulling his permit and building his project.
No, sir. He does have a current variance in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Now, Ms. Metter.
My name is Carol Metters, and I live at 507 Windsor Drive. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Appreciate the service that you provide to our community. You should have received an email from me about a week or so ago stating my concerns. My first involvement with zoning issue was for some property that was directly behind my mother's on Manchester Lane, the property on Shades Creek Parkway. That's when I found out there was a Neighborhood Preservation District. And so, as I found out this information from the Homewood Star that stated this had been approved unanimously by the planning commission, where nothing was said about what was going to be done with the property. And then Jennifer sent out some information saying it was a small parcel of property and more information about what was being quoted now as to the use of the property. But I became very passionate about the whole issue. And so, I then sent a letter to all of the residents on Tamworth and Belmont. I live on Windsor, and I'm just impassioned about my neighbors' situation as well. And so, all of that is in front of you. The only thing that I would kind of highlight is the issue about the property being bought for the hotel as is. And we could not find any information posted online about when this property was bought and the asking price and that sort of thing. So, it appeared to me that it was either sealed or something wasn't public about it, which was of concern to me. It also appeared that the other property was bought, and this Tamworth Lane property was bought to add to it after the fact. This is a Neighborhood Preservation District, and regardless of the size of this property, it is a part of Tamworth Lane. It is not a part of 280 and the Mountain Brook Inn. So, I ask your consideration in voting no on this proposal. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Metter. Next?
Thank you for having us here today to listen to our concerns. Ditto what Ms. Metter said there.
Forgive me. Your name is?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Crystal Drummond. I live on Belmont Road. And while my house does not back up to this property, it's very close in proximity. You can almost see our houses from these photos here. And I just have a concern for preserving the historic nature of our neighborhood and the reason that we all moved and invested in our homes there. And if you would please vote to continue this as a preserved piece of our neighborhood, would appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hey, how you doing? My name is Chris Williams. I'm against this. 705 Belmont is where I stay. All this stuff that's already kind of started going on, light pollution's coming through, sound. It's one of the more historic neighborhoods in Homewood. I'd hate to see, you know, just the corporate area just get closer and closer to it and kind of eat the charm of our neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I guess I'm the last one. My name is Annalise Beavers, and I live at 707 Warwick Road. And not to repeat everything that everybody else has said, just to add to it, I walk Tamworth all the time. And as much as the buffer, those trees, you can see straight to Brick Top. You can see everything from there. So, if you add this, you would be taking a lot away from that buffer, so. But that's it. I'm very much against this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Anyone who, anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? We certainly want to hear what you have to say. I hope so. You're on the list.
My name's Rakesh Patel. A little bit of history on the property. Technically, we did not acquire this property when we bought the, other purchase of the property. It came about in a quick claim deed after the fact with Graham Company because it was a property pretty much in no man's land. They said basically, they have their waterline going through there, so they didn't want the responsibility of that property. So, we said, okay, we'll take it on, but we'd like to incorporate it into our adjacent development, just to make it all zoned the same. Now, it's so small, the idea is maybe we might need to use it as a turning radius of that retaining wall that we'll need for the turning radius. If you show the back map of the layout, we'd be turning that corner. So, the idea is maybe we might need it, so we thought we'd go ahead and get it zoned because we might need to get into it just to put a toe kick maybe, if we need to bench against it. So, that was a theory because since the property was available, it's pretty much standing in no man's, because the property behind it and everything else is all owned by, not by us, by Graham, but still waterline works, has an easement on it. So, really technically, you can't build on it, most likely. I mean, nobody wants to take the liability of it. And there's a property on the other side that is owned by Graham, and there's a triangle there, which, of course, we don't own. So, we have no necessity. It's a landlocked property. So, the idea is just to bring it incorporated into it. There was no reason, I mean, the development would still go on with it, with or without it. It would just make it easy in how to deal with it in the future and keep it all in one piece contiguous to the property and just to keep it, basically, because the slope and the property is actually, the road's going to go up and up the hill. So, this is a bottom portion of it. So, basically, you use it for the toe kick or retaining wall or something over in the neighborhood. That's about it.
So, the topography of the triangle is no different than the other part?
No, it drops off pretty severely. I mean, everything dropped. If you see all those lines hatched across, it's dropping at least every hatch line is about 10 foot. I'm not, I'm not a civil guy, but 10 foot every hatch line drops off. So, it's a very severe drop. So, if we need to use it as a toe kick, is what it is, there's no way you can be able to get across and do something with it just to make it easier. But it's a severe drop across that. Because you go from 740, 710, you can see how fast it goes up the hill there, so. It's a pretty severe drop. So, there is going to be a retaining wall to turn that radius to get up the hill, so just to help out, push it out. We don't need additional parking spaces. Basically, we have plenty, just to turn that road, to make it easier for the trucks to go turn that radius if we need to use it. Since the property was available, we thought we'd go ahead and make it all one contiguous zone, so it makes it easy for us to use it to turn the radius. Technically, we cannot, right now with the zone, we can't get on it to do and push dirt against it, I don't think, because it's zoned the way the zoning is, so.
I understand. Questions? Mr. Watt, did I see you have one?
I do, but it may be more for Mr. Cobb. Can he build the retaining wall if the zoning has changed? If the zoning has not changed, excuse me. With his current zoning, can he build the retaining wall?
Yeah.
Mr. Kendrick, what's...
I'm trying to think that through.
Right. I understand. That prevents him from, it can't be a single parcel. But can he build the retaining wall anyway?
Well, you can't, you can't put a parking lot on it because it'd be NPD zoning.
Right.
So, I really don't think he can, to be honest with you. I have to, I might, me and Mr. Kendrick, Mr....
You can, uh...
Okay. Then we're in agreement. I was going to ask him for sure because I was struggling with that a little bit. I really don't think he can. So, basically, you've got a piece of property that's landlocked. Can't be used. You can't put a house on it.
It's got trees on it.
It may be NPD, but there's no house going to fit on that. It doesn't, it depends how big your dog is.
Okay. You had a comment, Mr. Thames?
I was just saying, no, you're not. I wasn't saying all that.
It's just got nice trees on it.
Other questions? Mr. Wright?
I have some questions. So, right now, you're not sure you even need to do anything with this property right now. Is that correct?
We, right now, I mean, the design is proved, the civils have proved it for the radius. I mean, it would just, it can be done with it, with or without, basically.
Well...
It just makes it easier if we need to use it to put, bench against it, to create a retaining wall, make that a little bit bigger space for the semis or whatever trucks need to go up that hill to make it easy for them. That's about it.
Because I've heard several times it said you, you might need it, you, you...
I mean, you know, when these developments take so long, you don't know until you get further into it, and then they say, well, we need a little space. It's not going to turn, things come about. So, I mean, it's a process.
And so, it's possible you may not need it, if the...
I'm not going to use it for anything more than a retaining wall.
I understand that, but it's possible you may not even need it.
That may be.
Because we don't know right now, correct?
I mean, it makes it easier for the civil engineers to design a little bit better to have that little gap.
I know, but it's still possible you may not need it.
Right now, it's designed for, it does not need it right now.
Okay. And, and this property that you purchased, I don't know if you probably, I used the word first, I'm sorry, the quick claim deed property?
Mm-hmm.
That just came up. Did that come up after your planning commission meeting? Or...
That's correct. It was basically after the fact. It was owned by the previous owner. He didn't want to take the responsibility of that property just laying there. He said, if you want it, I said, well, we'll see what we can do with it. We'll take the responsibility. Somebody's got to make, still be responsible, it's in a, sort of in that middle area of this. Owned by Graham, right? Yeah.
Oh, the property was owned by Graham?
That's correct. Graham had to require to get waterline through to Brick Tops. So, they had to get it to make that route.
So, Graham, Graham didn't want any potential liability, and they said, take it. You say you may need it, and...
Maybe, but they still got potential liability with that whole waterline and everything else. So, that's theirs, so I didn't, I didn't want to take that responsibility.
And, and there are some vegetation and trees on that property right now.
I believe so, yeah. I mean, it's a slope. It's a severe slope.
I understand that. But, but if you did take the property, you would, you would have to get rid of some of those trees if you're going to, if you're going to have to use it.
I mean, you're going to see a lot of the trees already taken out, because before that, this property's no more than maybe a 2,000 square foot, maybe even less than that, right? 1,000 maybe even. It's really, really small.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty small. So, I mean, it might be a couple of trees that's on it. That's about it. Two, three, four trees. It's just really a toe kick of maybe a retaining wall, a toe kick of a retaining wall, maybe need to get on to it to be able to make that turning radius a little better.
Well, and I know you know the buffer back there, you know, the importance of that buffer cannot be...
There's still the buffer of that waterline going through. A 10-foot...
Well, I understand we got, I understand that, but I'm talking about the physical trees and vegetation buffer.
That would be, yeah, I mean...
I would think a better approach on this would be to find out when you get further down in your project and find out if you really do need this property. And if you really do need this property, to combine any potential need with this property to, you know, with insurance of what kind of buffer's going to be there to ensure this neighborhood is protected, because this is an NPD area. I don't care if it's a two-foot by two-foot area. It is NPD. It's there for a reason. And we take those serious of all our neighborhoods and all our different wards. And this one just happens to back up to that neighborhood. And I'm, and I'm a little hesitant on it because we don't even, we don't know where we are on it. And I understand it's a project, and it takes time, and you've got to evolve. I just feel we're, we're too early on that, and we're certainly too early on that with regard to potential protections or something that if you do need it, you know, maybe there's something that can be put in place to enhance and to comfort these neighbors to know that this is going to be okay. Because right now, we don't have that. And right now, we don't even know if we need the property for your development. And we love your development and glad for you to come, but, but this one is, you know, is a little tough to swallow. Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr....
Mr. McCloskey?
So, the, if I understand this correctly, you're saying that the building, the planning commission is growing, so we see that's what was approved by the planning commission, so the growing of the parking lots and everything else, which, I mean, it's, it's essential to what you get from the hotel. So, I mean, in my opinion, then, if the right question is not, because it was already approved and trucks and everything can get, the turning radius is there already. So, I mean, that's just my opinion, but if everything's already approved, then the parking lot works like it's supposed to work, and there's enough rent to get the parking there, in my opinion, it would be...
All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions from the council or comments? Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I would, I would, Mr. Tompkins, right? I would say to you...
I'm good.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Ma'am, if you'll sign in, please?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Come, come. Your name and where you live?
I'm Anna Unken Holtz. I live at 509 Tamworth Lane.
Right.
And the pictures that are shown with the vegetation and the trees, that is beautiful, but it no longer looks like that. There is a stark contrast. We can see everything that happens at Brick Tops. We can hear the deliveries every morning. We can see their floodlights shining into our house. So, a vegetation, or a vegetation barrier has been promised, but nothing is there yet. So, to encroach even more onto our privacy is heartbreaking, and I am adamantly opposed to the parking lot and the high-rise and anything else, so.
All right. Two things. One, Mr. Cobb, is this something we can address with the Brick Top folks? About the buffer?
Yes, sir.
I know it's separate from this, but she brought it up.
She just mentioned the lights, too. I'll go over, their lights are supposed to be down lights. They're not supposed to shine off their property. So, we'll look into that.
Look into both items, if you would, please. And secondly, your baby's name is?
Her name is Ellis, and she's very happy to be here.
Okay. Thank you.[1577.33]
Thank you guys.
Nice.
Hey, all citizens will be acknowledged, okay? Anyone else that wants to speak to this? I'm going to put him on the spot, Mr. Montgomery. Did you want to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Come on.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you do. We can't, it has to be on record, and that's...
I do not live in Homewood, but I was just thinking, like in Edgewood, I know something that really upset a lot of the neighbors recently was how Taco Bell was redeveloped, and Taco Bell had the opportunity to push that parking lot all the way back to that line and put their huge dumpster right there. And it's all legal and it's all, you know...
It's in Birmingham.
Oh, okay, it's in Birmingham. Well, I know so many of the Homewood residents...
We can't control that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, just the way that, the way that property is developed, that, I mean, if it's a parking lot, the parking lot, that corner can hold a huge dumpster of where, because that's the furthest area away from the hotel, and it would be a very convenient place. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? It's okay. Nobody's rushing. All right, if not, we're going to close this public hearing. Comments from the council, anyone?
Yes, I would like to make several comments. I heard from numerous of our residents, and I know you all did, too, but I heard from probably three times as many as you guys did. And I stand with them, and, you know, when I, learning from you guys and learning from the residents who have been here a long time, the history of why the NPD was put into place. I like the trends that we have been doing since I've been on the council as far as, you know, the Hennah Street area, making sure we maintain these buffers, making sure that we protect NPD, how important it is, and the significance of it to our city and our residents. I'm disappointed to hear that we have got some light, lights coming in from Bricktops because I've stood out there with Ms. Moore on that property and we, you know, talked about where the plannings were going to go, and I'm disappointed to hear that that has not taken place yet. So, I'm glad that we're going to look at that. I know the point has been made repeatedly about how small this triangle is, but in my mind, it's significant to take something as important as an NPD and rezone it to particularly commercial high-rise. I just, I think that sends a terrible message, and I'm glad to have you in Homewood, I really am. I'm excited about it, and it's going to be a lovely development, but I don't think we need to rezone this section of the property. I just don't.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Anyone else want to speak to this matter?
And I'll just repeat, just 20 seconds, just that, what I said before is that I believe we should uphold the NPD and we, you know, particularly in a situation like this, I mean, where we are very much uncertain whether we even need this property. And so, I'm hesitant, and I know we all want to safeguard the NPD in all respects, and I think we should very much so protect the NPD when we're not even sure this property is actually needed, is going to be needed by the developer, and we know it's not needed with what was approved by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map for the City of Homewood, whereas the planning commission has approved and recommended to the city council that the zoning app and the zoning map of the City of Homewood be amended to provide for the rezoning of the property currently zoned, the NPD neighborhood, Preservation District 2, and be rezoned to C-4B, high-rise office commercial district, zoning district. Whereas the council has set the public hearing for tonight, that the city clerk has given notices provided by the Code of Alabama that the following described property at 510 Tamworth Lane, parcel ID 2800-172215, and is described in Exhibit A, be rezoned from NPD to the C-4B zoning district. Section 2, that after the enactment of this ordinance, the city council, the uses permitted and the C-4B district are to be, control the uses of this property, that the city council has set the public hearing at tonight at 6:00 PM, and notice has been provided. Section 5, any part of provision of this ordinance declared be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conference jurisdiction, all parts of provision remain in full force and effect. Section 6, orders become effective immediately once adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please, Ms. Salter.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, this will be, has the potential of being an ordinance, 2731. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. I will not ignore the right-hand side of this council. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Mrs. Andrews?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
No. So, this is defeated 10 to 0, and we will move on. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's involvement. And y'all are all welcome to stay, but you're not going to offend us if you don't. Okay, 130119, public hearing continued from January 28th for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at 1651 Independence Drive requested by Greg Cobb. As we continue this on, let me remind all of y'all that we charged David Brant, who was here earlier, right?
Yes, sir.
To go back to the proverbial drawing board. So, can you report on that, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, Mr. Brant called me today and asked if we could continue this until the next meeting. He said he didn't have his drawings prepared that, like, good enough to bring forward tonight. So, he's asked to continue it to the next available meeting.
Well, we can certainly continue the continuance of the public hearing, okay? And we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm interested to see what he has to say. Let's give, let's give the crowd just a minute to settle down. All right, hold on just a second. All right, 240119, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Alabama Historical Commission to establish Homewood as a certified local government. I would point out to you that this is requested by the historical, Historic Preservation Commission, and Barry Smith, I would point out to you, we carried this over from 128 of 19, and I thought, and help me out, Ms. Salter, on the records, I thought we sent this back to Special Issues.
Yeah, it was my remembrance that we, after Ms. Foley spoke to us, that we referred this back to the Special Issues Committee for further discussion, but that did not show up on the...
Okay, well, again, as I mentioned at the first meeting, and I know we have individuals here interested in this, we've got a carryover situation here with our city clerk, so bear with us a little bit. I can assure you, this will all be straight from here on. But your chair's, your president's desire is to have this back in Special Issues.
And I've already spoken to Ms. Foley that that's, that was her, her intention was that they were going to be back...
It didn't make it in the notes. It just said, "Carried over for town to review what the city will be signing up for," and she'll talk to the Historic Commission at the state, and will like a week to review it. So, it was special referatives on me. I didn't, it didn't get in the minutes.
Ms. Salter, I'll take full blame for that.
Yeah, I'll take it.
So, I think, I've already spoken to her, and I think the intention is that...
Do you want it referred to Special Issues?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you. All right, 220918, request for the consideration to transfer a portion of Lake Shore Parkway for a portion of Green Springs Highway with Aldot, requested by Mayor McBrer, and DeJarvis Leonard with Aldot. Report from Finance, please. Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the mayor signing the updated agreement. The motion was made on Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Thames. 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any comments or questions by anyone on the council? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous for 220918. 231118, request to review the city per diem meal account policy for city employees requested by Ms. Smith. Report from Finance, also Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the changes to the per diem policy. Motion made by myself and seconded by Council Wright, and 5 to 0 coming out of Finance for approval.
Great, so we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any other questions or comments? I don't think so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is, again, 100% approved, 1918 will be the resolution. 150119, request for consideration to transfer $200,000 to Highway Public Road Cooperative District requested by both Mrs. Andrews and Mr. Wright. Report from Finance, please, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of transferring funds. Motion made by Mr. Wright and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, and I believe I saw an email from Ms. Andrews today saying that 100,000 of that was...
No, that's the other...
Another different one?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, never mind.
Sorry.
So, this is approved, 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any other questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is Resolution 1919, and it is approved unanimously. 160119, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign contracts with Serum, is that how I pronounce it, mayor? Serium, anyway. S-I-A-R-U-M, Communications, for the network at 123 Oxmoor Road to replace network at 120 Oxmoor Road, requested by Mr. Yates. How do I pronounce it, Mr. Yates?
It's Serum.
Serum, okay. Report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met and heard a report from Mr. Yates about this and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval, motion made by myself and seconded by Mr. Thames.
All right, any questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Since there are none, that is Resolution 1920, and that is unanimous. All right, 190119, request for consideration for a crosswalk across Oxmoor Road at Seminole at Trinity United Methodist Church, requested by Ms. Andrews, Mr. Thames, and Mr. Gualtney. Report from public safety, Mr. McCloskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the crosswalk at East Hawthorne and Seminole. The motion was made by Council Anderson, seconded by Council Thames.
All right, great, thank you. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to provide for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Oxmoor Road at the intersection of Oxmoor Road with Seminole in the city. Be ordained by the city as follows. The chief of police shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Oxmoor Road at the west side of the intersection of West of Oxmoor Road with Seminole at Trinity United Methodist Church. Two, that all drivers of motor vehicle is defined in the highway code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined above. Section 3, any person found guilty of violating this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, all other ordinances or parts of ordinance contrary to the provisions are hereby repealed. Section 5, any part of provision ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conference jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect all other parts of provisions. Section 6, orders become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council. Approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2732, correct, Mr. Kendrick?
31.
31, that's right, because we defeated the other. Okay, motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
All right, motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Thames. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes. So, this is approved, 2731 unanimously. 200119, request for consideration for a crosswalk across Reece Street at Central Avenue. Again, requested by Mrs. Andrews, Mr. Thames, and Mr. Gualtney. Report from public safety, Mr. McCloskey.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the crosswalk with the addition of appropriate lighting across Reece Street. Motion was made by Council Thames and seconded by Council Wyatt.
Great, thank you. First reading?
It's an ordinance to provide for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Reece Street at the intersection of Reece Street with Central Avenue. Be ordained as follows. Chief of Police shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Reece Street at the intersection of Reece Street with Central Avenue. Two, that all drivers shall, defined by the highway code, shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk. Section 3, any person found violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, that all ordinances contrary to the provisions of this ordinance are specifically repealed. Section 5, any part of provision ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conference jurisdiction, all of, all of the parts of the ordinance remain in full force and effect. Section 6, orders become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council. Approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2732. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, so that's approved unanimously. Next item is committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. We move on to other new business where we have a few items, four to be exact. 070219, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 2830, bless you. 16th Place South, requested by Jonathan Kelly and Greg Cobb. We're going to set that public hearing for February 25th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Okay, next, 080219, request for consideration of approval of a funding agreement for Highway 280 Cooperative District, again requested by Mrs. Andrews and Mr. Wright. And I would point out to you that this is different than the actual transfer. So, Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Andrews, second from...
And I'll second.
Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This will be 1921, Resolution 1921, and it is approved. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate it. Yes, we went through it, Robert and I did, and thank you, Robert, for answering the questions. And I have to think about the math, but I think I saved the city 30 cents on one item, and we clarified a couple of others. So, I would ask that the council approve the receipts for the period of time, whoops, off my agenda.
You want to move that to the bridge fund for 30 cents?
Hey.
That's a better comment than I had, so I like that.
I'll save it for my pleasant remarks.
We need a whole lot more.
I got some for you.
So, I'd ask for the receipts to be approved for the period of January 28th, 2019 through February 10th, including the 30 cents.
All right. So, we have a motion from Mr. Wright. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is also unanimous. Finally, 100219, request for consideration of adoption of a resolution placing a lien on the property located at 28 Edge Hill Road, Homewood, for the cost of abatement in the amount of $16,500. As a reminder, this property was declared public nuisance on July 9th, 2018 with Resolution 1891, requested by Wyatt Pugh and Melody Salter. Is there any other explanation, Mr. Pugh, that we need on this, other than what I just read?
No, sir.
We saved you to last.
Thank you. I included a report, so if you have any questions about that, it should be fairly self-explanatory, I think.
Any questions, council? There being none?
That was your question.
Yes, we do.
I agree to approve.
All right. Motion for Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrus. Ladies always first. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is...
Melody, just for the record, it's not Mr. Walton, right? Oh, so it's 9 to 0? Okay, thank you.
So, that's 9-0, and that's Resolution 1923.
Thank you for that, Ms. Smith.
Sure.
Mayor? Uh-huh.
Mr. Limbaugh, I know we added the fence variance to the referral agenda. Did we actually set the public hearing for the 25th?
We did. We did both. But thank you. Thank you. Every little bit, I need every little bit of help I can get. Thank you. Mr. Thames? As a reminder, we have a committee of the whole at 5:30, two weeks from tonight. Next Monday is President's Day, and we're not going to ask city officials to work on a day they have as a holiday.
I understand. Um, I...
So, that was the finance and maybe the budget and the offhand...
But, but, but my question to you is Finance, can it finish in half an hour?
Um, I mean...
I don't know.
I mean, let's see, there's about one, two, three, four items that are on the committee referral agenda, and there are two additional items that are remaining, one which is the city traffic study on the proposal. Do you understand?
No, we're now, it's waiting for some federal approvals.
Okay. That's probably going to be a carryover, and then, what do you have to do, they, you have to figure out, people have to address, so...
How much time?
I'm going to put the pressure on Walter, it's like 10 minutes.
Okay.
That's what he gets.
That's what he gets for being in Los Angeles. Right, I like that.
Hey, let's make it 5.
No, let's make it 5:15.
Yeah.
That'll mess him up.
Yeah. We can get that P and D.
Do you have any P and D items?
Well, there was the annexation, but, Ms. Salter, have y'all heard anything?
No. I've not heard anything from the gentleman that was here since that meeting. There's a good deal of work to be done on that, so I'm going to have that by Monday, I don't imagine.
Well, we won't, we won't do P and D then. And just wanted to thank the mayor for working on the Lake Shore Exchange. That's exciting with Green Springs, to see it done. Let's keep in mind that TAP applications are due in, I think, late May, so let's put our thinking caps on about what we want to do with the money that's coming along with it. And Jennifer and Peter, great work on the bridge. That's exciting, too.
Thank you. Ms. Higginbotham?
I have an announcement.
Okay. Mr. Wolverton?
Just a couple of things. I think since our last meeting, Taste of Homewood was fantastic.
It was.
We really enjoyed, enjoyed the evening. Pretty proud to see Ash win the People's Choice Award, I guess. So, that's also, also exciting for our ward. And then, just wanted to thank Chief Ross and the Police Department. Had a situation in the last week or so with a registered sex offender showing up as a, as registering one of the local hotels as their place of residence, and we tactfully were able to have them decide to go elsewhere. So, obviously a concern for, for us and for our kids in the neighborhood, so I just wanted to thank them for their due diligence in encouraging him to go elsewhere indirectly.
Thank you. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes. Everything that is on the Public Safety Committee agenda is hot topic stuff with several people, as you guys were aware of my hour and a half long committee meeting last week. Do you, do you have any problem with me not calling it for next week, since we're not going to have any time, and then doing a long one for the week after? Anybody care?
I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
So, you're not going to set it for the 25th?
I am not.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
I am, since Mr. McCloskey is not calling P and Public Safety, I'm going to call Special Issues for 5:15.
No, I thought we were calling...
I thought it was Finance.
We called Finance for 5:15.
Oh, wait, I thought...
That was 5.
No, that's 5. He has 5 all the time.
Well, but he doesn't have to have 5 this time.
It's true.
Well, I'm fine with that. I can, I can handle 5:15. I've got to be here for sidewalk talk anyway, so. Special Issues, 5:15 to 5:30. Finance, 5 to 5:15. Got it? Okay.
So be it, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
We will not argue over that one. Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. McCloskey, your chance to defend your Corna Palooza title is coming up. Homewood Athletic Foundation will be holding Corna Palooza on St. Patrick's Day.
Ooh. Ooh. How interesting.
There is a change of venue this year. It will actually be at Pizzeria GM and out into Patriot Park.
Cool.
So, the food will be Pizzeria GM food, and they're supplying beer as well. So, it'll be from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on the 17th. So, we are taking names of people that want to be on teams, on two-person teams, as well as sponsors, so if anyone's interested, let me know.
I've been known, Patrick, for many years. Y'all in trouble. My base is helping better.
Challenge them, Mr. Wolverton.
I would say the opposite. I think we got a chance.
March 17. March 17? March 17. St. Patty's Day. St. Patty's Day. Wow.
We, I believe there are already 25 teams on there with a hope to get around 50, so...
Wow, that's fun.
Ooh.
Okay, guys.
Ms. Andrus?
I have several announcements. I did want to tell everyone, Mr. Mayor, you'll be very thrilled to hear, our treasurer for our cooperative has opened a money market with the money that we're, that we have right now. We are earning $500 a month on our balance right now.
Pleasant be to 30 cents.
For the bridge. That's right. So, you laugh about the 30 cents, but we are earning a lot of interest. I mean, that's really going to be big money at the, by the time we start to have payout money. I wanted to tell everyone, the 23rd is steeple to steeple. We'll be over in West Homewood, so if you guys can join us, benefiting the United Methodist Children's Home. I wanted to congratulate the girls and boys indoor track team for once again winning state championships, and I wanted to recognize the following state champions. Will Stone, Aya Finch, Edie Smith, Alex Brooks, Maggie White, Makaiya Sills, Logan Justice, Brady Castle, Jack Gray, Kiara Gooden, Arianna Roper, and again, Makaiya Sills. So, really big performances from everybody. Will Stone today was, was awarded for the third year in a row, the Gatorade Athlete of the Year. So, he is up for, now he's up for the National Gatorade Award, so really big news there. And then, if you don't mind me just indulging me for a second, the Homewood Boys Tennis is, we had our first match against St. James, Edda Montgomery, and we won 8 to 1, and that was the biggest win we've ever had, and it was just a really exciting time, and then we played in the tournament all day Saturday, and we're, that's a young team, and we're excited to see them go, so...
Great. Mr. Wright?
All right, just a couple of things. First of all, congratulations to our basketball team, who will be, plays in the playoffs...
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.